Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll pull the meeting forward. Could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. We'll open the meeting up to a public comment. Again, kind of items only for the front end and then the back end, you can ask general questions. So we'll open it up to public comment. Okay, we'll close public comment. We're going into our special presentation, Leaders of the Pack. We'll call up the elementary school first.
Do you think I want? We have Mila Forrester, our October leader of the pack. She's in second grade in Mrs. Finch's class. Mrs. Finch says Mila is a hard worker and a loyal friend. A standout skill for Mila is her ability to describe her problem-solving strategies for all academic areas in a way that assists her peers. Our favorite time of the day is when we share daily affirmations, and Mila is always thoughtful and introspective in choosing hers each day. In a few words, Mila is gentle, kind, curious, attentive, friendly, and amazing. Coach Helmer, your P E teacher, says in physical education, Mila comes to class prepared for activity on a daily basis. Mila always has a smile on her face and is very respectful. Mrs. Petraschak, your library teacher, said, I can always count on Mila to be a positive presence in our library. She's responsible, respectful, and a true asset to our school community. Mrs. McCaffrey said Mila is such a wonderful student in music. She always makes the best choices, and she's always participating. I can tell she loves to sing. Keep it up, Mila.
We're gonna do a few pictures. I'm at the good angle here. We'll smile.
You got this, Mila. Look over here, looking straight ahead.
I'll look over here at this one. And then I know we have this one.
One more.
If mom or dad or anyone wants to grab pictures, please come.
They're coming up.
Pose. Look at the whole family.
Yeah, look at the way of this one.
Go ahead, you guys take it first, then I get it.
All right. Look at this one first. All right, nice.
Okay, ready? Here we go, Dad. One, two, three.
Okay, now we're in middle school.
Hi, everybody. Our leader of the pack is Alana Shum. I will summarize because all her teachers kind of said the same thing. That Alana, this is my favorite one, Alana enters class like she's having the best day every day. Her positivity, participation, and excitement for learning are unmatched by her peers. Alana is such a smart and dedicated student. She's like having another teacher in the classroom. Her strong work ethic and commitment is a great model to all other students, truly an asset. So everyone had comments that talked about not only her academics and how hard she works, but her character as a person and as a leader, which.
Pose with your certificate.
Alan, you gonna join her? A little more.
Just to piggyback, Alana comes to the high school for her geometry class, and she comes in, just like you said, bubbly and so happy every single day. I'm like, oh. She's just so fun when she walks in. I'm like, oh, she's just so excited to be here. So congratulations. So for the high school, we have Matthew Castellano. I have to say that the responses I got is probably the most I've ever gotten from anybody that spoke really highly about his character. So some of the things your teacher said, Mr. Tatum is his English teacher. I just met Matthew this September, but he was my top choice to leader of the pack. I've seen him helping out with our new student, walking him to classes, helping him communicate with his teachers, and just being a general source of comfort and support. Ms. Garcia, guidance counselor, talked about the same idea of Matthew being part of taking on the role of being a role model for a new student who does not speak any English, correct? And he comes in and he introduced him, so he helped him first off, but then on top of it, he also introduced him to all his friends, brought him into lunch, they play soccer together, and he just made this really awesome community for one of our new students. So it just talks about how thoughtful he is as a person. Dr. Scro said Matt is hardworking and dedicated student learner in the classroom. He has an optimistic demeanor and a kind heart. Mr. Early, your soccer coach, Matt is a great soccer player and an even better person. He is kind, compassionate, and gives his all. I could not think of anyone else who deserves this more. And Mr. Shaw, his band teacher, Matt is an integral member of both the concert band and jazz ensemble. He's a quiet leader whose dedication and musical talent consistently elevates those around him. Matt has shown remarkable growth over his two years, two-plus years at Highland High School, and he's truly a pleasure to have in the music department. Come here, Matt, play trumpet at one of the upcoming concerts. So as you can hear, he is a well-rounded leader in our building at all times.
So we'll start with this one here. All right, great. Now press.
Again, on behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to all our leaders of the pack. Job well done. If you'd like, you can leave where you want to stay. You can listen to the rest of our meeting. You're free to go. Okay, we have our consent items tonight. It's E A one to C point two. As usual, if you have any questions, comments, want to pull a item, you can do that. Take a look real quick, and then I'll entertain a motion to move the consent items forward.
A motion.
Backed by Heather. Any questions? Full-on favor? Pose. So carry. Okay, move on to our principal's report. Hold. Reverse the order.
All right, just have one kind of cool addition to my board report. We started getting in and out our coins to for our book vending machine. We handed out nine so far. We had an absentee. We would have done ten. And five have selected their books, and there's four that were like, we're gonna come back. And so there was like multiple books they wanted to get, and so they're, I don't know if they're gonna book it, buy it at the book fair, or if they're just gonna go for it, one of the two. So we're starting to see certain books rifle out of there a little bit quicker. So that's my addition. Anyone have any questions?
There you go.
Thanks, Ian.
Thank you. Middle school.
All right, one quick addition. Actually, it's middle school and elementary school, but we're doing, our P T As are doing a joint fundraiser for blankets. So they're thirty dollars. The website is on here if you're interested, or you can email me. I sent out a K twelve to parents in the middle school earlier at the end of last week, but I brought flyers for everybody. So if you'd like to buy a blanket, it supports both the elementary school and the middle school P T A. So that is my, sorry. So that is my update. Does anybody have any questions?
Good.
Thanks, Ian.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Hey, you got an email.
Good evening, everybody. I have one addition to my high school board report. On the twenty-ninth, we are hosting a community event with Olster County Prevention Council on vaping and substance abuse. This is a division of Family Services that both the middle school and I work closely with in educating our students on making good choices. They did also partner up with Peer Leadership last year to put on an event for the middle school to help our eighth graders transition to the high school. So they've been a great benefit to our district so far. So this special event, they do run in a lot of local districts where they provide a mock teen bedroom on possible hiding spots and things to look for for parents and community members. We did have some help through social media on sharing this, and I believe we're up to thirty, close to thirty shares on this event through the community. So we're looking forward to having that at the high school cafeteria. So I just wanted to invite everybody, if they're able to make it, for this important event for our kids.
Any questions for?
No, I think he, buddy, I think he brings up a, an interesting point where, you know, the, that there's companies out there that create apparel and objects to hide things in plain sight. And unless you take one of these classes and are shown, so I think it would be a great interest to parents, and I hope they participate. So thanks, thanks for sponsoring.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions? Thank you. Okay, our director's report. I'm sure everybody got a chance to review the director's report. Our directors are here this evening, so if you have any questions for our directors, shout them out. As usual, I guess our directors are doing a fabulous job, and there's no questions.
Okay, incredible job, and I appreciate in transportation, the creative ways that she's trying to recruit drivers and things like that. So I hope that goes well and continues success.
Kathy, that job fair is coming up. You haven't attended it yet, right?
No, it's Thursday.
Okay, we'll move on to our student rep, Logan.
So starting off in the elementary school, the elementary school is continuing to provide students with the opportunities to engage, lead, and make a difference in their school community. This year, the school has launched a new Student Voice Club, which is open to fifth-grade students led by Missasa. The club has twelve members and meets twice a month after school. The club empowers students to share their ideas, lead projects, and positively impact the school environment. The Student Voice Club is actively planning ways to enhance the school community, including designing and creating bulletin boards that highlight the importance celebrations and themes for students, writing scripts for morning announcements that showcase the diversity of the student body, planning and executing a service project to benefit the school community. This initiative, along with other school programs, provides students with meaningful leadership opportunities while fostering creativity, collaborative school pride. Moving on to the middle school, the middle school is excited to celebrate school spirit and student engagement this fall. The middle school will be hosting its own pep rally this Friday in support of all of our wonderful student athletes. Students are looking forward to showing their school pride by coming in blue and yellow and cheering on their classmates. In addition, they will also be hosting its first Spirit Week of the year from October twenty-fourth through Halloween. It will include a comfy day where students wear sweats or pajamas, dark mode day, students wear all black, swap day, students dressed like teachers, and teachers dressed like students, plaid ops day, students wear plaid, fannel, or camo, and a trick-or-treat day, students wear their Halloween costumes. Events encourage school pride, creativity, and community while giving students a fun way to express themselves and celebrate together. Now on to the high school. October has been a busy and exciting month at the high school. We're in the middle of Homecoming Week, and school spirit is at an all-time high. Spirit Week kicked off with themed dress-up days. Monday was meme day, Tuesday twin day, Wednesday is pink out for breast cancer awareness, Thursday's Decades Day, and Friday wraps up with class colors for our pep rally. Freshmen in blue, sophomores in red, juniors in white, and seniors in black. Our pep rally will feature a four-way class competition with three games, musical chairs, tug-of-war, and a new challenge, which we're calling the Pizza Box Game. Classes will also be judged on their school spirit and class banners, which have become a fun and creative tradition for Homecoming Week. The Homecoming football game will be Friday night at seven P M. here at the high school against Monticello, and the Homecoming dance will be Saturday, the twenty-fifth, at six thirty P M. in the high school, with the theme being Tangled in reference to the Disney movie. And then that same Friday, the Stop D W I program will be visiting during lunch periods to give a presentation on safe decision-making, a timely and important message going into the Homecoming weekend. Then our citizenship and accent, and, oh my gosh, sorry. Our citizenship and action class took a trip to the Olster County Building, where we were given a tour by our elected county officials, including members of the county clerk, county executive, and county legislative offices. It was a great opportunity for us students to learn about how county governments are operated and see firsthand the roles of these officials and how they play in serving our community. And then lastly, as part of a C I A project, students Amelia Halbajon and Kelly Flores hosted a Lunch and Learn focused on Hispanic Heritage Month. Their goal was to spread awareness and educate students about Hispanic culture. The event featured themed foods like empanadas generously donated by El Paso, a local restaurant in town. It was a big success and a great example of students connecting in the classroom and learning with our community. And that's all I have on my report. Any questions?
Any questions? Very comprehensive report.
You helped me cross out some of my reports.
Very good. Thank you, Logan. Okay, we'll go to Dr. Boyd for a system superintendent report.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit tonight about, I've been mentioning Portrait of a Graduate over the last few meetings. There's a sheet on your desk. This is the image that the state has put out that we're kind of seeing everywhere. So tonight, I just kind of want to give you a little bit of background on it, kind of where, how we got to where we are, where we are now, and where we're going with it. As you'll see from, you know, some of these slides, there's still a lot of unknown here, but we are planning for it. So this actually started back in two thousand nineteen with our current commissioner, when she was our Regents Chancellor. She started the Blue Ribbon Commission, which really wanted to look at our graduation requirements and what we wanted students to have and to be able to do when they, when they leave us after twelfth grade. And as you can see, we're already six years later, still with some questions. So just some key points on that. Again, they created to look at our graduation requirements. They started gathering information from stakeholders. They started to develop. This has been altered and changed throughout. On the timeline, they presented some of the graduation members, measures to the Board of Regents back in November of two thousand twenty-three. They had a new framework. They held more forums. They asked for more information. And then finally, July of this year, they put out the final Portrait of a Graduate, which is on that sheet in front of you. Again, what they want to look at, they want to know the skills, attributes to make them successful, whether it's college or career, once they leave here. So this is kind of a statewide vision of what we want our students to be able to do and the attributes. So they broke it down into four transformations. So the first one being the Adopt the New York State Portrait of a Graduate, which happened in July of two thousand twenty-five. The second part is going to be redefining credits and learning experiences. So some of the information that we got is that this is probably coming out this spring. We don't know what that's gonna look like regarding the credits. They've talked about some of the things that they do want to see, which I'll talk about in a minute.
Yeah, are New York educators involved in that process? That would be my question.
Yes, yeah. So when the, one of the assistant commissioners back at a meeting back in the summer kind of talked about that this was coming, that they're working on. We don't know if they're gonna, it's gonna be a bigger shift with the graduation requirements, or if it's gonna be more minor shifts. We're not really sure what that's gonna look like. As you've heard, they keep using the word decoupling when they're talking about Regents examinations. So they're using the term, they're sunsetting diploma assessment requirements. Again, we're not very clear on what exactly that's gonna look like. They are not getting rid of the Regents exams, but they're looking, again, this whole idea was providing alternative pathways for students for graduation. So as this is, you know, coming down, we'll start to unpack it a little bit more. And the fourth transformation, moving to one New York State diploma. We currently have three, which would be our Regents, our advanced Regents, and our local diploma, which have different requirements. So they're moving away from those three, and the goal at the end of this, that there'll be one high school diploma with certain designations to go with it. So on the sheet that you have in front of you, the six tenants that I mentioned at the last meeting, academically prepared. They want a strong foundation in learning standards, creative innovator, utilizing our imagination, curiosity, and flexible thinking, critical thinker, analyzing information thoughtfully, looking at evidence critically, effective communicator, being able to articulate our ideas clearly and confidently, global citizen, acting responsibly within local, global, and digital communities, and reflective and future-focused, engaging in self-reflection to look at your own strengths and weaknesses. So this is, again, the image that is gonna be put out and you will be seeing pretty consistently. So as part of the timeline, in twenty-four, twenty-five, this is, again, this is from the state, this timeline, finalizing the Portrait of a Graduate, which they did in July. Back in the spring, they did put out an exemption for major life events. So if a student was sick and hospitalized, or there was death in a close family member, which would have prevented the student from taking the exam, there's a certain exemption that could be applied if they met some of the requirements. As you can see, they're gonna release the new credit requirements, which they say is phasing in with the two thousand twenty-seven cohort. So that are, those are the students that are entering ninth grade in September of two thousand twenty-seven. Looking at changing the standards, putting out rubrics and more guidance in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. And these are two of the, the original focuses that they talked about. So financial literacy was one of the big ones that they wanted students to have. And the other one, climate education, that has more recently lost some funding and some support, so we're not sure where that is gonna fall, but it sounds like the financial literacy is, is still moving forward. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, one diploma, starting to sunset the diploma assessment requirements, talking about some of the seals and the endorsements for that one diploma, and putting out finalized rubrics and guidance. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, best practices for innovation and implementation. And then fall of twenty-nine and beyond, that's that plus sign that they're putting out, new transcripts and, you know, putting in the Portrait of a Graduate. And then here, they labeled new assessments aligned to prioritize learning standards. We're really not clear on, on where that's going with that piece. So again, we're kind of in a, in a little bit of a holding, looking at it. So twenty-three cohorts, twenty-three that entered ninth grade and prior, everything kind of moves along as the same. The cohorts who entered ninth grade in twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, they are saying one diploma, but it's still the current credit requirement. So those students that entered ninth grade in twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, the current requirements for credit still stands. And then they're talking about the diploma assessment requirements decoupled by the fall of two thousand twenty-seven. Cohorts in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, again, one diploma. The new credit requirements should be in place for those students. For those, again, those students entering ninth grade in twenty-seven and twenty-eight, and then they are sunsetting the current diploma assessment requirements. And then the cohort twenty-nine and beyond should be full implementation, as they're calling it, for these new standards and requirements. So again, just some things to note. So those, that twenty-seven, twenty-eight cohort, we're gonna see some new credit requirements. And again, we're, we're waiting on those, on what they look like. And two thousand twenty-nine, so that graduating class of two thousand thirty-three will be the full implementation of this. So until that, until that time, though, we're still looking at our, our current graduation requirements. So what does this mean for us? Currently, our administrative team has been attending New York Inspires meetings at Olster Bosse's. We attended one just a few weeks ago to gather some more information. And some of the initial work that we're looking to do is kind of look at our current academic offerings and programs and how that might align. So as I mentioned earlier, like the financial, financial literacy, do we have that at the high school? That is a class that we offer. So looking at, hopefully, that does meet the requirements that they're putting out. And then starting to meet with some of the stakeholders to gather some more information on what Portrait of a Graduate looks like in high for us as well. So connecting our community to it. And just finally, this is looking at how we prepare our students for the future. So they identified that there was a change that we needed to make, that we could do some improvements for students when they leave here after twelfth grade. So this is all part of the process. And as you're looking at this, this is a long process, right? This started back in two thousand nineteen, and they're looking at ten years later of starting to phase in that full implementation. So we are in, in the middle of it right now, so we are doing some of that work, but it is, you know, some waiting too, to see some more clear guidance from the state.
Patrick, is there any point in time that we will be able to present this to the parents in the community as how this is going to play out?
Yes.
In a public forum setting?
So I think once we have a better idea of the credit requirement, which is hopefully this winter and spring, I think that will, because right now, there's gonna be probably more questions there.
Right, right.
So I think once that gets us to that point of, once we have a better idea of what that looks like, we don't know if they're really shifting this a lot, or if it's, if it's a minor shift, that it's still gonna be, you know, twenty-two credits and not much of a change, you know, then we can put that out there. You know, the hard part about this is, you know, as a parent, when you're looking like, all right, what grade, what year is my kid entering ninth grade? You know, how is this gonna affect me? And then the difficult part of, you know, one year apart could be a big difference in, in some of the graduation requirements. So, and, you know, how they have, they have to phase it in at some point, and there's no great way to do it without starting back all the way at the beginning of kindergarten, you know, when you're looking at the cohort of entering a two thousand twenty-five kindergarten students. So, you know, we'll see how it unfolds, but I think once we have a better idea of the credit requirements, then we can gather some more information that we have a little bit of a more clearer picture to present to them.
I'm hoping that internships are a part of this. You know, of course, you're gonna need some academic requirements to make that, but, you know, this is something they've talked about for years, but have never been able to operationalize it. I think some schools have, but it's really their own type of thing, because you still have a local option. That's gonna be going away. So, you know, otherwise, it's just another set of standards, and here we go again.
But again, some of those alternative pathways, they'll be great for some of our students.
Absolutely.
But how we logistically do that is. But how we logistically do that is, is something that we're gonna need to navigate.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Boyd?
It's crazy. I think my son went into kindergarten in two thousand nineteen when this work started. And he'll be the twenty-eight cohort going into ninth grade. So all through.
All throughout.
So it just shows how much, like, to put into perspective of one person's, like, career, right?
Like, all the work, yeah.
Okay, any other, anything else? Right, uh, superintendent's report.
All right, well, thank you to everybody for eliminating my report. But just a reminder to the board, I sent out, um, a calendar invite for the board retreat. That will be held on November nineteenth, six PM. And, uh, we'll get you more information, um, as that gets, it gets closer. Also, a reminder, I mentioned it at the last couple of meetings, this is my last time being able to mention it, but we are honoring Steve Lawback as the distinguished friend of education on Thursday, November twentieth, at the venue in Kingston. Um, there's still time for board members to RSVP to Lisa to get on that list. Um, one thing that wasn't mentioned this evening, so I, I want to mention, is thank you to the high school, uh, guidance department, putting on a financial aid night for our parents, uh, and families on Thursday, November sixth, at five thirty, and helping them go through the FAFSA, uh, process, which is, um, something that we're required to, to do. Um, we've always done it here, but it's now a requirement to have every, uh, student partake in at least the FAFSA or, uh, a waiver to that. Uh, they mentioned the vape presentation, but I want to thank the administrators for, uh, working so hard to get the, that community vape presentation, uh, up and organized. It wasn't a lot of time that they had to do that, and they pulled it all together. So I really hope the community takes advantage of that, because vaping is becoming one of the big, it's, it's the next big issue that, uh, you know, our students are facing. So you mentioned it, so I'm gonna just mention thank you to Kathy. She, again, being creative, she found, uh, that the Duchess County Regional Chamber of Commerce is ho- hosting a job fair this Thursday, and she, uh, is able to go and possibly recruit bus drivers. I will not mention homecoming again, cause you already did that. Our superintendent's conference day plans are well underway for Thursday, or for Tuesday, November fourth, and admin will be going over, uh, those, um, plans tomorrow at our cabinet meeting. And then finally, uh, our two thousand twenty-two capital improvement project is, we're in the final stages. We're wrapping some of that up. We will have some change orders that are coming, uh, within the next week or so. So we may need a, uh, an emergency board meeting or a special board meeting, not, not an emergency, a special meeting to approve some change orders so that we can get the funding, uh, out so that we can close out the parts of the project so that our aid flows appropriately for the upcoming year. I'll get you more information, uh, after early next week. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the superintendent? Just to piggyback what the superintendent mentioned regarding our capital project, um, our director of facilities, our business official, uh, support service has been working, uh, hard the last couple of weeks to kind of iron out some issues that we've had with the project. Uh, minor things, but, uh, those that affect closing out everything and finalizing change orders, like superintendent mentioned, to allow us to, uh, you know, have the building aid flow in our direction. So I just want to thank everybody that's working diligently to, to make that all happen. Uh, any other questions?
You know, on, uh, as far as the capital project, I mean, allowances are still available and there's still some resources there.
I believe there's still contingency money, uh, left in, I think there's some items that the support service is gonna, kind of discussed that we might be able to peggy back onto that.
Yes.
Uh, additional funding that's there to, uh, complete some items that weren't, uh, included in some of the, uh, contracts.
Great.
Okay, um, Board of Education, new business. Just something to, to kind of follow through with that same vein, talking about capital project. Just something for board members to keep on your radar for, for the future. Um, there were some items in our current capital project because of, uh, funding, uh, at some cost overruns that didn't meet the bonding ability that voters approved. Uh, those things still have to be done. They're probably top of our priority list. So something to keep in the back of our mind to, uh, move forward in the next couple of years. Uh, once, uh, you get over this project, there's always more, more to do.
Building condition survey.
Yeah, and we do have our building condition survey. So there are some priority items that are still outstanding that we want to accomplish in the future. And then again, going through, uh, our bonding consultants to see where, you know, that's dropped off and where we could, uh, fund another project. And we do have a capital reserve to help with that. Okay, um, anything else under new business you want to bring up? Old business, uh, board retreat, Joel touched on that. Uh, we have, uh, some topics already out to our facilitator for that retreat. Uh, if you want, and you think of something that, you know, you want to have addressed that night, uh, send an email on to Joel, and he could, uh, add that to the list. Currently, we're talking about, um, a couple items. Power and authority of the Board of Education as trustee, speaking on behalf of the board, confidentiality. Uh, we're gonna touch on those topics. Uh, responding to complaints brought to the trustees. So if you're out and about and you hear something, we'll, we'll touch on that. Uh, freedom of information law regarding emails, even text messages, uh, district records and data privacy, we're gonna touch on that. And any current legal updates, we'll have some, some, uh, some discussion regarding that. So is there anything else that you, comes to the top of your mind that you want to have addressed or just forward it on to the superintendent? We have a two-hour-plus window, so.
So Allison Smith, just so you're, I failed to mention that Allison Smith from Legal Counsel will be there to, to host us or guide us through.
Facilitate.
Facilitate, that's the word.
Okay, um, anything else under old business we haven't touched on? Uh, under miscellaneous, uh, the Mid Hudson School Study Council Works for Excellence. That'll be held on November twentieth. Uh, please RSVP to Lisa by November third.
So I have a meeting that night, unless it gets moved, because Maul Bro's gonna potentially be attending there. But as of right now, I'm RSVPing now, but if things change, I'll let you know. But have we had some board members RSVP?
Yes.
Cause it's parent-teacher conferences, so I'm.
That's the other thing.
Planning on going until I realize it was parent-teacher conferences.
And, uh.
November twentieth.
I just want.
November twentieth.
It's an honor, Steve.
The nineteenth, the nineteenth is our retreat the next night is the.
Is it the high school parent-teacher conference?
Yeah.
Okay, so there may be a party of one coming, but.
Just let Lisa know.
Yes, please, thank you.
Yeah, this is the dinner that used to be in May, and it always conflicted with everyone's schedules in May. So then they decided to move it to November, and we asked them for early November, but this is the date that they, that they have.
Yeah, I hadn't responded yet, so I was gonna ask my spouse.
Got you.
It's parent-teacher conferences, yeah.
Okay, anything for Goodwill here at the district? All right, I'll open the meeting up to public comment for general items.
I have a question about the settlement agreement. Can you talk a little bit about what that is and what, what that occurred with that?
Yeah, so this is, uh, this was the track. Um, the steel chase was designed incorrectly, so we needed to get all of that work done again. And this was, uh, this agreement is to keep the district whole, so the district didn't have to pay for the mistakes that were done by, uh, folks in the know.
The architect.
Architects, uh.
The design.
The design team.
Okay, and they're gonna cover it?
Completely.
Yeah, all parties. And how much is it, give or take?
One fifty-one. One fifty-one, one hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Janine, seconded by Jim. All in favor? Poo. Phil Carey. Thank you.